I'm going to call the meeting to order. Can we all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, thanks for coming, everybody. So, we are going to start by asking if there is anyone here who would like to participate in public comment. Seeing none, we will hold the rest of that time until the end of the meeting. And why don't we actually kick off with our introduction to our new staff members? Mr. Robitaille, do you want to come up and tell us who you've got tonight?
I'll try to do the heavy work, but just names and faces.
I know, it's going to be a good picture. I got it.
All right. Very excited to introduce Center School's new staff for the 2024-25 school year. So, starting over here, we have Sarah Benson, who is going to be a grade-one teacher. And Sarah comes to us with kindergarten and first-grade experience at DJ Baky School in Northampton. We have Erica Hafey, who is our new K-2 speech and language pathologist. Erica is a familiar face, though. She was our speech specialist the last couple of years, so we're excited to have her onboard in a certified role. We have Crystal Legimian, who is our new math target assist, and that is a new position for Center School that we're very excited to have and appreciative. She's coming to us from the Raymond School District. Next, we have Julia Kelly, another familiar face, and she's going to be teaching grade one. She's served with several hats at Center School the last couple of years, and I believe including PE. All right, that's very cool. And then, last but not least, we have Colleen Leitner. She's coming to us from SAU 16. She's going to be a grade-two teacher this school year, so very excited to have them all aboard and very proud to be working with them. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Come on down, Mr. Sadler and our Marston friends.
Good evening, everyone. So, a small crowd to introduce, that's all right, stability. Again, third grade this year is Mrs. May Burnap, so she'll be joining the third-grade team, comes to us from Barrington School District, phenomenal addition. And then, Brandy Hardman is sort of a jack-of-all-trades. She does clerical work, classroom coverage, dining room monitor, and crosswalk as well. So, quite a few things going on, but these are the new staff members at Marston, so welcome to the school year.
Dr. Campbell and our Hampton Academy friends.
I think we're going to need a little more space here for us, but that's good.
That's great.
And then, with the new, here we go. All right, we're going to go a little out of order. We have, actually, we'll try to go down the way. We got Brian Gray on the end. He's in for technology. He's going to be our new technology teacher. Next to that, we have Samantha Corwin. She's going to be our math interventionist. Next, we have Carolyn Smith. She's going to be our eighth grade, well, she's our eighth-grade case manager. Then, we have Sean McMahon. He's working in our Inspire program. We have Paul Whitmore. Paul Whitmore is our long-term sub for ELA for Hillary Andross. Then, we have Adam Goodwin. He's our seventh-grade math teacher. We have Chloe Labrie. She's our sixth-grade science teacher. Madeline Priddam, she's our health teacher. Then, we have, sorry, where are you? Ch-ch-ch, oh, man. Christina Mercedes of Spanish. I'm going to get better at this, guys, I promise. We have Lauren Merkel. She's our sixth-grade math teacher. And Natalie Strauss is our new power professional here. Very excited to, a good start.
So, we just want to thank all of you guys for taking time out and coming in. We promised you they won't regularly have to come to school for meetings, but you are welcome if you'd like to. And I think most of us will say we're super happy to see lots of new faces, but I think it's great to see lots of our Hampton family coming in and wanting to work here with us. So, welcome, everybody. Thank you. So, let's see. Let's start on our agenda here. So, Mrs., yes, you guys, this is your chance to escape, but if you are fascinated, and we would understand that, you're welcome to stay.
I explained I didn't offer them a water because I thought it would assume that they were going to be.
Right. Nice. Nice. Okay. Mrs. Bridle, do you have any budget committee updates?
They met with Lois Semiraya and had a tour.
Tomorrow, tomorrow, we're meeting at 8:00 at the Hampton Academy Bell, and we are going to tour them with Facilities Manager Keith Lassard. We'll start with Hampton Academy, and then, from there, we'll go to Center, and then, we'll do Marston. And then, Thursday night, we have our meeting with the Budget Committee at 6:00.
Thursday night or next Tuesday night?
Oh, next.
I have it in town. It's Thursday.
Oh, it's Thursday night? Okay.
We'll double-check it with you.
Okay.
All right.
Anyway, it will be exciting.
It will be.
Do you have anything else from any of your other, any updates?
Oh, no.
Okay. Molly, do you have anything?
No.
No? Okay. So, just actually.
Tuesday night. It is Tuesday night at 6:00.
Okay. So, just to address, we, Mr. Shepherd and Mrs. Shepherd are both out, and so, we'll catch up with them next month. I do have a couple of announcements from the PTA. Number one is Mums. They are doing their annual Mums fundraiser, and actually, the proceeds from that are going to be going to the scholarship fund at the Hampton Rec Department this year. So, look for an email. That should come out in the next day or so, and the orders for the Mums are going to be in by September 19th. Those are always beautiful, and it's a great chance. It's an easier way to get them than having to go to Home Depot, right? They're going to do spirit gear in October, and we do have a fundraiser coming up, October 5th and October 6th, the All-Town Car Wash, which is the car wash at the mall right by the post office. They'll be donating $5 for every car washed done over those two days. So, that's October 5th and October 6th. And I think that's it. Anybody have anything else for updates?
Does that $5, what does that go for, Wendy? Scholarships or?
It's just being donated directly to the PTA. It was an unsolicited donation. I believe Center School actually got an email from the organization looking to donate money.
And your good news about PTA was?
And good news about PTA, which is just that after a little bit of a drought with members and people to help, we did have a fantastic turnout at the meeting tonight. And so, those meetings are at 5:00, right before the school board meeting, and they are going to be doing a kind of back-to-school PTA breakfast at Marston, and the dates, I'm sure, have been sent out by Marston School in their newsletter. Okay, so, I think that's it for updates. Let's jump right into Mr. Robitaille.
All right. Just to get started, I just wanted to thank my whole staff for getting the year off really smooth as a new principal. There's obviously a lot of things that you could think about that could possibly go wrong, but the staff really stepped up. You know, people going out of their way to go above and beyond their job description, so that was awesome to see. We started off with the Meet the Teacher event. We had really great attendance. Families seemed happy. The kids seemed very excited to get back in the school building, so that went very well. The annual Boohoo Breakfast went off on the first day of school, so we had really good attendance for that, too. And I think some of those parents also made their way to the PTA meeting this evening, so that was awesome to see. We're getting busy and diving in with formative assessments. Staff have been busy, you know, laying classroom routines, getting responsive classroom morning meetings up and running, but now, we're trying to get our initial data benchmarking taken care of, so the intervention team's been very busy, you know, yesterday and then, the rest of this week, getting some initial benchmarks taken care of. I just wanted to point out, I'll be sending out weekly principal newsletters, which will be a little different from monthly in the past, so families can expect those Friday afternoon, probably early-evening-ish when I get that wrapped up. So, those will go out every Friday. Just wanted to point that out. You know, it'll have recaps from the week, important dates coming up. I'm trying to leave the PTA a section if they have anything they want to advertise, and then, just happenings around the building. The building came together very nicely. A big thank you to Mr. Lassard. I know he's putting up with all my questions, so I really appreciate everything coming together. Building looked great for day one, and the new preschool playground is breaking ground tomorrow, so we're very excited about that getting up and running, and hopefully, early October, the project will be completed, so we're very excited about that. Any questions?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just a great start to the school year at Marston. You know, really happy with the new smooth pavement. If you've garbed down at all, it's really nice, so a big thank you to the town for that. To start off, tomorrow is School Pitcher Day, so just remind your children, if you're listening at home. I know sometimes we have school and then a day out, and then, we have an event the next day. Some people tend to forget, so just be ready for that. A few things happening, as Wendy mentioned, we'll have our PTA Welcome Back Breakfast. It's just a great time to interact with our PTA board members, learn about some of the events we're hoping to put on this year, and also interface a little bit with the admin, you know, at Marston, so we're hoping everyone can come. It's just kind of drop your child off like you normally would, and then, park in the parking lot and come right in. We start around 8:30 in the morning. A couple just fun things going on. Our Marston Mail Program is starting up on the 23rd, so caring adults at home will receive a little more information about that, how they can participate by sending a letter to their child at school, and then, their students are expected to write in return, and it will make its way back to you. The students do it internally between classes and grade levels, just a great opportunity to communicate and, of course, practice our writing skills. Our school store is going to begin in October, and the PTA is going to send out a signup genius for that, if you're interested in, you know, coming in and helping out their school store. I guess, I'll just put it out there, I mentioned it to the PTA as well, but just a friendly reminder, if you do want to participate in school events or come in and volunteer, attend a field trip, you do need to go through our fingerprint and background check process, so there's an icon on the website that you can click on and schedule an appointment with the SAU. Just a heads up that it takes about four to six weeks for that to come back, so I know people are thinking about September field trips and October field trips and things like that, so it's best to get it done. Other than that, we just want to give a shout-out to Mary Borg and her crew. At the end of the month, it's Food Service Appreciation Day, so the kitchen is at Marston. We see how hard they work to get all the food prepared for the entire district, so just a big shout-out to Mary and the crew at Marston. Other than that, I'm open for questions or comments? All right, enjoy the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Campbell.
All right, tough acts to follow, but here we go. So, we have excellent start off to the school year. Teachers have really gotten involved over the summer, and their presentations at our back-to-school meetings were really impressive. It's great to see all the teacher buy-in, and I think it's really played a really good impact on our culture and the community that we're building here at Hampton Academy. We have Picture Day on the 12th, so not the 11th, but the 12th. On September 13, oh, and tomorrow, on the 11th, we'll be hosting a field trip informational night at 6:00. We will have the sixth-grade environmental camp. Followed by that, we'll have our information at 6:45 for the Washington, D.C. trip, and then, at 7:30, eighth graders can stay back for the Quebec trip. We're trying to get everyone in on the same night, so that this way, no one has to come back and forth if they have kids in multiple grades. On September 30th, the Community Oven will be hosting Dining for a Cause from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. This fundraising event will support the eighth-grade class trip to Washington, D.C. We want to thank the Technology Department. They worked really hard getting all the Chromebooks to all the students and staff, and so, it was a big push at the end, but they really, really worked hard. Shark News posted their first episode last week. Think it's going to be a vital tool for us to use as we're trying to get messaging out to our kids. And, yeah. And on September 4th, we had Hampton Academy. We worked with Sarah Fillion in our staff meeting with, and we really just tried to work on setting the tone for our kids in a positive way, and worked on modeling and specific praise and clear directions, and this way, we can kind of walk into the classroom, and all the teachers are equipped with a little more tools in their toolbox to make sure that their messaging is getting across in a positive light. But, yeah, off to a really great start. But, yeah, open up to questions from you guys. Sure.
So, I think the question we want to talk about, and we've discussed it a little bit, is we did have a higher number of seventh-grade students than were predicted, and my understanding is you guys have a plan kind of for how to manage that, because I know we have some concerns about class size.
Yeah, correct. We are pushing up against the 25-student class size in our seventh grade. Over the summer, we had 14 new registrations in our building, so we haven't even included our winter rentals yet, so it's getting a little tight in our seventh-grade classes, so we're going to repeat a model that we've done in the past to try to break up the kids into the five different cores, and should be, we've got a bunch of buy-in from our seventh-grade teachers, so we hope to roll that out soon and get the information out as soon as we can, so.
Will that involve adding any, will that involve adding a new position? I can't remember.
Yeah, we're hoping to, we are hoping to move a position into the team, and then, that will open up some support in our Shark Block.
Where, just so I can, can I comment on that a little bit?
Yes, of course.
Yep. We're thinking that we may be able to use Title I funds because it will be supporting Tier II, Tier III students in literacy. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Accurate, very accurate, yep.
Yep. So, we are working with Dr. DeSylvan Napkin to see if that's a possibility, to use some of our funds from Title I. If not, we would be looking at a, it's really, it's two periods a day.
Just two periods, yeah. Dr. DeSylvan Napkin and I talked already, and she is able to clear those funds for us, so that will be posted shortly, and we look forward to bringing in people to help support those two RTI classes, those two Shark Block classes.
Unless you have other thoughts or recommendations, we're happy to take it, but that, we thought, would be, would make the most sense. In the past, they did it with Diane Riordan, I don't know if you remember, many years ago, where they had a similar situation, where they started with four core teachers, but because of the numbers, they wound up having to add an additional literacy RTI block, and they did it this way, so it made sense. What I think the school appreciated was that Dr. Campbell and Mrs. Levine went to the seventh-grade team and did some problem-solving, and I think this was, please correct me if I'm wrong, was a, it was the solution that we thought would be, make the most sense, and at the same time, keep the teaming and keep everything intact in terms of the program.
Correct, yeah. We approached the team to try to problem-solve, and we got some of their input on things, and from there, we were able to move forward. We put together a plan and brought it to them earlier this week, and everyone seemed on board for it. So, yeah, we'll be moving forward, making sure that everyone, you know, everyone who's affected by this change will be informed, and, yeah, making sure that our class sizes are below the 25 mark, so.
So, if your child is going to environmental camp and/or Washington, D.C. or Quebec, you should be at that meeting tomorrow night, correct?
Must be at that meeting, yes. Correct.
Well, that's actually, that's a good, is it a required?
It is a required.
Because there were some questions online about it being.
Highly recommended, we do.
Highly recommended.
The information, yes, the information has to be delivered at one point or another, so we're going to start off with the meeting on the September 11th and see where we go from there. You know, we're rolling this out in a way to try to get everyone into the building at one time and try to make it as convenient as possible, and then, kind of like many things this year, we're going to try to cross bridges when they come our way. Yeah. I guess just one last thing. I do want to extend an invitation to the Community Read, you know, for the, we're trying to raise some awareness about social media and our children, so, you know, I think the Community Read that Dr. Costa is running with the library is going to be very powerful. It's something that we see over at Hampton Academy that is much different than the other two schools, and so, raising awareness on the, just being appropriate in social media use and everything like that. We're working on our end through Shark News and our health classes and our Technology Department to educate our students on being good internet citizens or making sure that everyone is respecting each other and everything like that. So, just a little pitch there, and I appreciate all the hard work that you guys are doing, so thank you.
Thank you. I think we're all set.
Lois, how many people have registered so far for that community?
There's about 25 people registered.
Wow, that's great.
Yep, no, we're really pleased. Cameron and I have been in contact, wanted to make sure that we could get books to anyone who wanted them, so they were able to get books through the Lane Library through one of their donations, or you probably know more than I do, and we were able to put some aside, too. We just want to be able to offer people a book if they need it. We wouldn't want that to be a barrier, but we're really excited, and we're hoping that there might even be a few more added as it grows. But, our first meeting will be that first Tuesday in October. I want to say October 3rd or 2nd. I'm not looking at a calendar in front of me. I go one day at a time, because as we know, the days are full and the minutes go fast. But, it is the first Tuesday in October. I apologize, it is October 1st. So, that will be our first meeting. That'll be 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock, depending on the size of the crowd, if it's, you know, if we can, we'll do it in the community room, but if we feel we're going to be too crowded, we'll come here to this larger space. And then, of course, the November meeting, because of Election Day and school board, we did need to move it to the 19th. So, that's how that rolls. And then, we're skipping the month of December, knowing people are very busy with the holidays. We'll meet on January 7th, which is also a Tuesday, February 4th, which is also a Tuesday, and if need be for weather, we'll go to March 4th. And that'll be from 7:00 to 8:00, but it is really an eclectic crowd of community members, parents, former staff, and current staff. So, it really is a great group, so we're really excited about it. Anxious generation.
Dr. DeSylvan Napkin, please join us.
Nice to see everybody. You do have my report, and, yeah, we're working on these vacancies and filling in, making sure we are fulfilling all of the IEPs. It's been challenging. Each building has had its own issues, but the administration and the teachers have been really good about sitting down, looking at everything, kind of pulling from all of our resources to find out how are we going to make sure we're servicing all our kids due to the vacancies that we have. But, you'll be getting something tonight from Dr. Costa, which will help a lot. And, let's see, safety care training, we use safety care in this district, just to let you know. We keep up with our training. It's a two-day for initial, it's a one-day for research. We do it every year. We are keeping up with that. Every building has safety care staff, just so you are aware. Our apprentice program is running, going wildly, I would say. Many paras are involved in that, and it's going to be very exciting over the next few years, but this also involves them going to school and doing internships and finding, you know, mentors and all kinds of things for them. So, we're working with all of those educators with Mary Ford. And the vacancies I just mentioned, one thing that I did not put in my report, I had amended it, but it didn't get put in. We are looking, and I brought Patrice Baker here. She's not new, but she's kind of new, just in case people don't know her face. She's the Early Intervention Outreach Specialist. Patrice? We share her with 21. She does two days with us and three days with them. So, we've been talking a lot last year about starting a preschool playgroup, and we would like to move that forward this year, and I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention because it's a really great idea, and it involves us using the school and inviting in parents of students of the ages, like, two months is where we start, up to age five, so before school, on a Friday, using our building and providing a playgroup, a weekly playgroup. It's a one-hour session. Patrice has run this in a couple of other districts, and it is very successful, and it's a great way to connect with families of, you know, who have young siblings who will be entering our school system. So, it doesn't require board approval, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we are trying to get it going. If you have questions or comments, I can talk about it next time or whatever you want to do, but it's something that we'd like to move forward with.
Who are you using for staff for this? I know Patrice isn't doing it just by herself.
So, Patrice definitely will be doing it, and Waypoint, she brings in some WayPoint staff, and the parents actually stay with their children the whole time, so we don't, it's not a drop-in. So, the parents come and they stay with their kids the whole time. So, it's more of a facilitation group with the parents and the children together.
It's good for connection.
It's really great for connection, and we're really excited about it. We've already talked to the principal. We're talking with the preschool teachers. Obviously, we, you know, need to use our space on a Friday, but we've got all kinds of parameters and how to sign people in and out and what it's going to look like, and I'd like to just inform you that we'd like to move forward. If you want to make it an approval, I'm happy to have that. Otherwise, we'll just move forward and get this rolling.
I don't think we need to approve it. I think as long as Mr. Robitaille and Mr. Lassard and everybody are on board, I think that you guys are fine.
Okay. Awesome. And we'll be so excited to use the new pre-K playground.
That's amazing.
Yeah, it's.
Now, wait, snap. Glad you mentioned that. Is that pre-K playground open to the public when school is not open?
Hmm, it is a fenced-off area, so I'm going to say no, unless someone else wants to say another better reason, but I don't really, I don't know. Keith?
I think it's a town property.
Okay, then it's a town property. Then, come on and use it.
Children should enjoy.
How you, do you have a fence, Keith?
Get in the fence.
I mean, is it, does it have a gate? If it doesn't have a gate and a key, then.
Probably just a key. Yeah.
Let's ask. We haven't built it yet.
We knew you wanted to come all the way up this way.
School age only, right?
I got to defer on this one. I don't know.
I don't need school age only.
They're, it's a preschool playground.
Which is great, because I will say, there is a little, little kid playground over by a tuck, and it is not particularly fenced in, and I was always concerned about that.
We're very excited that the preschool playground will be starting construction, and hopefully, the beginning of October, we'll have some sort of grand opening. The reason the playground is fenced in is because a lot of their children sometimes wander off. In our preschool program, a lot of those kids are learning, and learning to explore and to play and to develop body strength and other skills on a playground, sharing being one of them. So, that's why it is fenced in. We are not going to lock it up.
Perfect.
It was supported by the community. I think it's exciting. But, what I would like is for adults and teenagers to find another place to play because they're too big for that equipment. I think it's quite clear, but hopefully, that will be policed with the little kids saying, hey, that belongs to us. Anyways, I welcome everybody.
And people who carry in trash will also carry it out.
That has always been our expectation, but oftentimes, Dunkin' Donuts and McDonald's have left treasures.
Oh, it's not that far from Dunkin' Donuts or McDonald's.
Well, I don't know if parents just get distracted or whatever with their kids, but, yeah, we look forward very much so that the preschool kids and kids around that age work on equipment that is size-appropriate.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Thank you, Keith.
Okay, there you go. That's your answer.
All right.
Anything else for me?
Any other questions for Dr. DeSylvan Napkin? Nope. I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Levine?
I'm sorry.
Are you? Oh, excellent. Okay. Perfect. Okay. You're still on the list, so, but it's Tim, right? Is it Tim?
Tim Smith.
Tim Smith, okay. So, I'm going to introduce Tim Smith. He is taking over tech for me, which is great. We're kind of tagging him yet, but Tim is here to do the Board Report and give you what's going on in tech.
Thanks, Amber.
Great, we'll make the change.
Hello. It's nice to actually meet you face-to-face, so. You have my report. Basically, with Channel 8, we've been finalizing the update with the fiber. Nick's been working hard with the town to work on a couple of other things related to that and access for people. We've continued to support staff and students as needs have arise. Yeah, I mean, we've been keeping pretty busy with that stuff and then trying to train people here and there when we can on systems and what have you. So, if you have any questions or comments?
Thanks for getting those Chromebooks up and running for those middle-school students.
Yeah, Nick and Dave did a great job with that. I can take no credit for that, other than making sure that they got two classrooms, so.
Appreciate that.
Did you have a question, Jenny?
No.
Okay, we're good.
Thank you.
I do have one for Emily Fixler, but she's not here.
Well, maybe Dr. DeSylvan Napton and I could help to answer the question.
Well, I want to know how our population is this year as compared to last year that we're servicing.
Dr. DeSylvan Napton?
You know, you know, Ginny, that's a great question, because.
It's okay. Jenny had a question about, I think, maybe the McKinney-Vento numbers, that kind of thing.
Mary comes up for free and reduces.
Yeah, numbers on MB.
Yeah, McKinney-Vento, yeah.
Yeah. How they compare? Because I've heard that they're growing, that's what.
The number looked high, higher.
Yes, they, they are growing. And, it's, and, you know, when our meeting today, we were just, you know, when it kind of said the highest MB number ever. And, so do we. So, that is a correct number. And, this will present financial challenges for us as we continue to share transportation with other districts and try to help those students with trips or things that they may need to be going on that are school-sponsored, and that is not in the budget. I do not have a budget line specifically for MB kids who need assistance with school-sponsored activities. We've been able to work through that with SRO funds and other title grants over the last couple of years, but I am very concerned, so I'm glad you brought it up, that I don't know how we're going to service them. If it's a school-sponsored event that we are requiring, and if it's a, has a financial impact, then we have to sort it out with these MB families who are, you know, of home, of that status. McKinney-Vento status means they are declared, not having a stable home life, and therefore, there's a lot of other repercussions that come with that.
Well, I can tell you that Mrs. Borg and I actually wrote a letter to the Rotary, just to keep us in mind as they're making distributions that we do. To your point, we always have a lot of needs and we know that for many of our McKinney-Vento children and others, food insecurity is a problem in Hampton. And, we know that we've unfortunately had to raise the prices of our meals this year due to rising costs and overhead. And, as a result, we're trying to be proactive and reaching out for them to keep us in mind as they're, as they do, and to see if we might be able to kind of get a jumpstart on it early in the year, as opposed to waiting till the end of the year and looking at that fund balance. But, it's something we're mindful of and you're absolutely right, Dr. DeSylvan Napton. In our conversation today with Tally Westberg, who is a social worker over at Winnicott, the numbers are pretty high. And, I think it's statewide.
We also have environmental camp in Washington DC, of which, you know, I think that's part of the discussion when Amber and Neil talk about the Washington trip. Are we going to be able to offer scholarships? What kind of scholarships, that type of thing?
Yep, and that's, we're going to talk about field trips, you can see on the agenda later on. What I was really pleased to hear, just in a meeting at 3 o'clock today, they shared with me that the price of DC is down.
Okay.
Which was, which was, I was happy to hear that, due to a number of factors, but I was glad to see that it's down to, it's still $1,000, but last year, we were about $1,400. So, we, we've got, we, it's decreased by $400 about, and that does include the insurance, which I was really happy to see that. So, those things help.
Yeah.
And also, and also environmental camp, if you recall, we did reduce that as well. We had gone five days, four nights this year. We're going to go four days, three nights. So, we're, do do some things to try to be proactive in thinking about rising costs in our families. So, hopefully, those little things will add up.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Mr. Lassard? I don't know why, Mary, you are welcome to come up. I'm excited. He's got to get ready for the long walk back up.
Good evening, thank you, everybody. All right. So, I wanted to share with the folks at home, I don't think they can see it, but this is the application. I don't know where the cameras are.
And, everybody got one, right?
Everybody got a hard copy. It's literally four questions. It'll probably take you longer to find a pen to fill it out than to fill out the form. So, please, fill out the form and send that back. And then, the second, I wanted to make sure that parents or families that were already on the meals program last year, they have to apply again this year. So, you have to apply every year. That's it.
How low sales right now, Mary?
Um, you know, it's the first week of school, it's, 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 it's a little low, but that's always. The kids bring their lunchboxes until they see all the great food that we offer and, and then they're like, "Oh, yeah, we're ditching our lunchbox," and then they start buying. So, it takes a couple of weeks for the kids to figure it out, but I, I think it's going to go up. Yes, we do.
Just a, just a comment to the families out there, that I think you will back me up on. You know, I remember when I was a kid, free lunch was, and reduced lunch was such a stigma, because it was so clear.
Yes.
When it was time to check out, who had free and reduced lunch.
Absolutely not.
And it was, people, children weren't embarrassed and ashamed. And, that is not the way it works now.
Not the way it works.
Those kids go through that line, they get the same lunch everyone else gets, whatever it is they've picked out. They go, they give their name, their name or their card to the, to the cashier, and they move right along. There is no discussion about how much they are paying. So, just to the families out there.
Okay.
If that is what is holding you back from applying, please don't. No one will have any idea. It will be very quietly, basically, between you and Mrs. Borg. We will send those in, that's something she keeps, keeps very private, so.
And, you don't ask for verification of income or anything?
In October, the state, we pull, we pull a verification process.
For everyone?
Some, not everyone, it's a pool, 3%.
Okay.
And, so then, the verification process begins. For the last few years, it's only been two or three applications that have been in the pool.
What?
So, but, we do verify in October.
And, the only reason I bring this up is the state of New Hampshire is doing this big thing to get people enrolled in childcare.
Yes.
Once they make the initial call, they get a request for about 15 items from their personal accounts. And, so, it's discouraging people from applying.
Right, I mean, this is literally four questions.
Okay.
Name, address, social security number, and four questions.
Just to make sure people understand when they can apply, like, what is the, who should be applying for this? Like, what's the qualification level?
Well, you know, it all depends on how many kids you have in the, in the family and your income. So, you really don't, if, you just think, it might, you might get some, you know, so why would fill it out?
Yeah.
And then, we plug in the numbers and then we see if it works for you.
Yeah.
And, it could be reduced if it's not free. That's the other piece of it.
Yeah.
What I like about our system is it's cashless. So, the paperwork is all between the adults. So, when kids come into a lunchroom, they grab their card and it's just, there is no conversation. You just use the card. Every child has an ID card with their, it's their lunch ID card. And, so, it is completely discreet, right? That's what I think we appreciate the most, and it is a cashless system. So, I think to your point, it is, it is discreet and it is really, everyone is treated the same.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Lassard?
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to offer some thanks to some supporting cast. I want to thank my staff for all their hard work year-round and the extra efforts during the summer. I'd like to thank Hampton leadership team for their support and encouragement through a very busy summer. Hampton should be very proud of their new leadership teams. We are finishing up our projects within the districts and we all look forward to the future. I'd like to, as Lois, I would just follow up, is that we are touring the Hampton Budget Committee tomorrow, for all those that can make it. We're going to be starting in the community room. We'll be walking around, showing the facilities, and we'll be boasting about our wonderful programs in the buildings. At Center School, we're finishing up, we finished the asbestos project. We have done the ceiling project, we have done the lighting project, and the playground project will be completed in October. Marsden School, we have the indoor air quality program, we have the boiler replacement. Hampton Academy, working on the boiler. I do want to bring up that there was some information brought forward about our Hampton Playgrounds at Marsden School and at Center School. And, I want you to know that we inspect the playgrounds and it is common wear and tear on those playgrounds. I do want to bring it to everybody's attention, that playgrounds are very, very expensive and ours will need to be replaced, or components on our playground will need to be replaced. Our playgrounds are heavily used, they're constantly used, and as I said earlier, they're used by people probably older than should be on it, but are still having fun. So, it's something we need to keep in mind for the budgeting season, there are certain components that can be replaced. Keep in mind, should we replace more than 50% of it, we have to meet all of the latest safety rules. Not that it's not safe now, but some things have changed. So, in studying playgrounds, I'm going to digress here just for one second. In studying playgrounds in a logistics society, we have found out more playgrounds become less fun. I just want to put that out there. Thank you very much, and I'll follow Neil's lead, I will open it to questions.
I think we're good.
All right, thank you all. Appreciate it.
It's been a lot to coordinate, Keith. We do, we do appreciate it.
We really do.
Dr. Costa?
Okay, I think, I want to start with just letting you know that from my newsletter last Friday and from a prior newsletter, I talked about what's happening with first student. So, for those of you who are not following what's going on, they are in the middle of negotiations. The Teamsters are supporting the first student workers, and the concern is, is that if they cannot reach a, an agreement, there is, or there was talks of potentially a strike. So, in our efforts to be proactive, we have told parents that they should be thinking about potentially alternative transportation modes. Should we get notification tomorrow that they are unable to meet their, they can't come to resolution, there is that potential. I'd rather be proactive in planning than to have anyone be surprised. I did reach out to Stacy Morse today, and she said that, that this time, there is no news to share, that they finished first day round of negotiations and tomorrow, they will go back to the table. So, I don't have any updates, other than, you know, they are trying to work hard to come to an agreement. So, I, I wish I could give you more definitive answers, but I don't. So, what we're doing is, I am working with our Hampton leadership team, and they are working with families to think about alternative transportation modes, whether neighborhoods are carpooling. We are going to have beautiful weather this week, it's not a bad day, it might not be a bad day to walk to school, to ride your bikes to school, whatever, whatever is going to work for families. If we should have to, if we do not have the buses, what we would do is we would extend the drop-off and pick-up times. And, so, there would be from 7:15 to 8 o'clock at Hampton Academy, where you could drop-off your students. We are allowing double the time, because we know that traffic and congestion could be an issue, and we want to make sure that families have the time they need to drop-off their children. So, that's something we're going to do. Obviously, we are not going to mark children tardy, because we know that there could be traffic and parents juggling and all those things, so we're going to be lenient with that. We're also going to extend the drop-off time at Marsden School and Center, so that would be from 8 to 8:45. And, our thinking was that for parents who have children in multiple schools, it helps to cluster when they could drop-off their, their children. So, we purposely, you know, discussed that, we thought that would be the best alternative. So, from 7:15 to 8 o'clock for Hampton Academy students, from 8 to 8:45 for Center and Marsden students. Our, our administrative staff has spoken to the SROs, we would obviously have them assisting with traffic patterns and all of that. And, we're just kind of waiting to see, but I really think it's important that parents are aware that this, you know, if we plan for it, hopefully, we won't have to have it. But, if we don't plan for it, then we, we would be caught surprised potentially, and I just try to be proactive with that. So, that's where that stands. Again, we have had conversations with our commissioner, who is aware of the situation, as we have with our state folks, like Mark McLean from the New Hampshire School Administrators Association, has been well-informed of this. This impacts not all districts, but it would impact our district, it would impact Rye, Greenland, Newcastle, and Newington, as it would Dover. So, there are, and SAU 21. So, there are a lot of schools that this first student group would impact. Because, remember, first students, they're in groups and regions. So, stay tuned. As soon as I have more information, you will be the first to hear. Are there any questions or comment about that? I just wanted to put that out there, where we are meeting, and I know that some people are curious, so that's the information I have.
My question would be about staffing. So, if we are expanding before and after school, who is going to be watching the kids who are dropped off, presuming that we're not requiring teachers?
So.
I assume you have a plan, I just thought we were.
So, I did talk about the afternoon, so I'm glad you said it. So, in the afternoon, it would, it would be a similar kind of a stagger, where it would be, I think we said, 1:45 to 2:30 for Hampton Academy, and then, 2:30 to 3:15. And, so, because it's within the contractual time, or pretty close, we do have the people we need to ensure that we have the staffing to supervise our students. Hampton Leadership Team, give me the thumbs up, if I'm, if I'm on track or if you need to help me.
Those are some enthusiastic thumbs up.
They were. And, we, we also, at the SU, said we would be happy to help in any way we could and, but we do have, we do have what we need in terms of the supervision, so we would be okay.
Awesome. But, parents do, could get there early, I mean, the earlier time, rather than waiting till the later time.
Yep.
Where you have a traffic jam of people who are getting there.
There is a 45-minute window on both ends. So, we purposely did that to allow for families. Again, we're fortunate in terms of where we're located, that, you know, those families that might want to walk to school that day, it could be the formal walk-to-school day, ride-your-bikes-to-school day, we're lucky, we do have a lot of sidewalks, and the weather is supposed to be beautiful this week. That's an option, too. I just don't know how quickly, if they were to strike, how long that would be. So, like you, I'm, I'm taking it day by day.
How much percentage of our kids actually use the bus?
If I had to guess, I would say no more than 40%.
Use the bus?
What, am I, would you think, do you think I'm about right? Would you say? Because I look at those buses, and I look at those parking lots, but do administrators have a feeling on that, one way or another? Yeah.
Yeah.
Hampton Academy?
Well, we don't have people riding bikes now, but I think that will change.
Yep. Yeah, so I think 50% is, anywhere in that, in that range, I'd say is pretty close. Thank you, on that one.
So, sorry, one last question, which is, how will parents be notified if this comes to pass?
So, we would use our messaging systems as soon as we know. We just, we don't have any information. But, as soon as we have information, I would be contacting kind of, like we do in a snow situation.
That's, yep.
Right?
I assume so.
We would, yep, we would be reaching out to the staff, we would be reaching out to the leadership team, and we would be posting on our social media sites, as well as using And we would be posting on our social media sites as well as using phone calls and emails.
Thank you.
Thank you. So additionally, in my report, you can see that obviously we continue to work with all of our stakeholders, which is goal number one. And we are excited for our work with the Lane Library on our community read. Obviously, our concern is around the physical and social emotionally safety of our students. Today during our in-service day, we had a fantastic presentation from Tally Westerberg.
Everybody said it was wonderful.
Yeah, from Winnetkin High School. She is their social worker. She came over and just as a change from Connor's Climb, she did suicide prevention and also did a conversation around being a mandated reporter and what that means. And those are two of the mandated trainings that we must do every year. And she was just fantastic. And I really do appreciate our mental health team, working with Winnetkin High School, and obviously Meredith Nado Superintendent for allowing her to come over and to do it. She was fantastic. So we're doing all of those trainings. And then you can see that we've already started to look at our curriculum practice. And as the principals have said, we are starting that STAR assessments to get a sense of how students are coming back to school in terms of their language arts and math achievement and being able to start thinking about our small group instruction to ensure that we are giving students what they need in the curriculum areas. We will be working with demonstrated success this year and thinking about piloting math programs to see if there might be a better way to deliver our curriculum. So stay tuned for more information on that. And then you also notice that we have a number of required PrimateX trainings that we're having our staff complete. We give them until October 31st to do that, so they have a little bit of time for that. And then finally, we are working with a small steering committee last Thursday and this Thursday to review our goals and to really get focused. We had some community members join us, and they had some great input that we are going to implement, and we're really excited about that. So I'll have more information to share with you, but we are working off of the draft that's in your handbook. But we're going to really focus on what is new this year. Like what are we specifically doing that's new this year? I think that if you look at this draft plan, one of the pieces of feedback we had was it's really long and lengthy. And one of the questions we get is, well, what's changing and what's new? And so what we'll share with you specifically what's new, so you know where we're going with these goals. And that's, I think, enough. Any questions for my report?
You did?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so, under new business, bless you. Did you want to get deeper into the steering committee work and the goals? Or do you think we're good?
I think we're good. And I think, yeah.
Yep. Okay, then how about if Dr. Campbell and Ms. Levine come and talk to us about field trips, I believe? Or is it everyone?
They all have information to share.
Okay. So we will start with the middle school and work our way down.
Yep. Just maybe changes that they have.
Yeah.
So yeah, we currently have three trips planned. We have the environmental camp coming up for our sixth graders. Seventh graders, the seventh grade team is still working out field trip ideas. But for eighth grade, we have our Washington DC trip and our Quebec trip. But all information will be out. I guess we'll open up to some questions for you guys.
Those are big trips. The only other, sorry, I'll jump in. The only other thing, eighth grade always does their trip in December to see a Christmas Carol. That's still happening. Sixth grade is planning their spring trip, but the curriculum has changed. So Hammond Castle, they don't cover that anymore in social studies, so they're reshifting to see what social studies topics they talk about. So Mrs. Duffy is working on trying to prep a field trip for that. Seventh grade is trying to figure out their field trip right now. That's the biggest one that's up in the air right now is just seventh grade. They've got a few options. They still do the SST trip. They do the Bring Your Kid to Work Day. They've been, they put on a list for UNH's marine biology, but that is a lottery. So if we get it, great. The biggest challenge for us right now is buses. The cost of buses for transportation is going up, so we're trying to balance the cost of the field trip itself and the cost of transportation. So the teams are really looking at that, especially where we have big field trips in sixth and eighth grade. So they're trying to be mindful of everything and make adjustments.
So I assume we are, unless I missed it, that we are not doing Puerto Rico this year? Did I, okay.
No, we're not doing Puerto Rico this year.
Okay.
And we're not doing Canobie Lake this year?
No, Canobie Lake.
Oh, wow.
But I think that's what they're trying to come up with, an alternative of some sort. But that's in process?
There's a bunch of possibilities. We're just trying to figure out the cost of trips. We're trying to keep it manageable for families because we do have those two big field trips in sixth grade and eighth grade. So they're still working on that right now.
One of the recommendations was last year, based on the wonderful trip to DC, is those eighth graders could really benefit from an experience in seventh grade that had a little more walking, that was a little more extensive. And the same company who does the DC trip offers a one-day trip to Boston, which is, to me, it would fit with the curriculum. And it would also give them that opportunity to do some of the things in Boston that require that kind of walking. One of the things we found with some of our eighth graders was the stamina was really, it was really tough for some of them on that third day where we do a lot of walking, visiting the memorials and the museums and that. They really, they were really beat on that third day. So that's one of the suggestions that they had talked about, which I think could be a wonderful opportunity and align nicely and really be more curriculum-centered.
The only problem with that is the cost is around $200, a little over $200. So that's kind of where they're weighing their costs right now.
A piece, Amber. And does that include bus?
That includes bus. It includes dinner, a show, some spending money for Faneuil Hall, a tour of Fenway Park or some ideas, going out to dinner at a restaurant, and then going and seeing a show in Boston somewhere. So great experiences, a lot of things to do, but just trying to outweigh the cost of everything.
But when you think about, you know, if I could talk about a little bit about equity, I mean, we think about in sixth grade, we do the environmental camp, which is how much a student?
Roughly, we're trying to keep it under $200.
So environmental camp is about $200 a student? And then they do the DC trip, which is about $1,000 a student? I think $200 might be in line with your sixth grade at least and seventh grade. I mean, just.
But we give, how much does the board support environmental camp? Did we put any in the budget?
We did.
We did. We cut it. I think we cut it some.
Yeah, we did cut it some, but we did.
Yeah, so that.
That keeps it underneath.
200. Okay, you already added it. I shouldn't have.
And I believe, did the PTA also?
Not yet.
Not sponsor?
Not at this point.
Okay.
So that's $200 like straight. So I think it's reasonable and I think it's fair. That's all I would say is I'm thinking about the three grades.
And we've got time to talk about that. So we will expect to hear more in the future.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you.
I think Mark left.
All right. Nathan, did you have anything?
New, maybe?
New or anything you wanted to update us on for field trips? You can just, you guys do a fair number of smaller field trips.
Yeah. Right now, third grade is planning their field trip to the Great Bay Discovery Center, you know, over in the Greenland Stratum area. Great connections to their science and social studies units. Fifth grade will be planning their Boston field trip. They used to do the Freedom Trail a long time ago, and then they started adding costs for like stopping at the North Church. And it became kind of an expense that we no longer wanted to incur. So they go to the Tea Party Museum and do a live simulation, but I don't want to spoil it for the kids. It's great. Fourth grade has been transitioning from their Strawberry Bank field trip because so many students kind of just go there already. It's so close. So the last couple of years have been taking students up to the New Hampshire Farm Museum in Milton, which ties nicely into both their simple machine science units and also their social studies units. And then fourth grade will go to the Boston Museum of Science at some point. They had transitioned that from a winter field trip to a spring because of, you know, it's just tough in December. You never know what the weather is going to be like, and we're sending kids on a bus. So we switched that to a spring field trip. Third grade usually tries to do a show for a lot of kids. It's their first time sitting down, you know, in an auditorium. And they kind of encourage them but not require them to dress up a little bit, and it's a fun experience. And then fifth grade goes to Bachelor Pond, which we own, so that doesn't cost anything. And then Odeon Point in the Seacoast Science Center for their science field trip. So every grade level does about two, and then we sprinkle in some other stuff in between.
We don't do the State House?
No. Actually, Mrs. Henderson and I were talking about what happened to it. But as long as I've been at March, and I'm not really sure why.
But you know, the great thing about that now is they've got the big Krista McAuliffe statue, which also lends to the Shepherd McAuliffe Science.
The third grade used to go there, but then the science standard changed from third grade to fifth grade where they study space. So that's why third grade doesn't go to the McAuliffe Museum anymore. But yeah, we were recently talking, it's funny about that, field trip. But yeah, so good times on the horizon, and just make sure you fingerprint it if you want to come and join us.
Thank you. And I think we're okay with Center. I think Center left because they didn't know we needed them, which is fine. And I think they do, a lot of their field trips are very small. They do a lot of walking field trips. They come to the library. They go to the fire station. So, but they do some nice fun ones. I think they also go down to Odeon Point and do a Wade Pool one at the end of the year. So yes, as Mr. Sadler said, if you would like to go on your children's field trips, you do need to be fingerprinted. It does take some time to get that done. Please contact Kathy Tuck at the SAU if you are interested in helping out with field trips.
Thank you.
All right. So next, we are going to discuss the school district clerk opening. That's you.
Yes. So we had, we thought we were going to have two applications for this position. As we know, we had talked about it last month. And we have one person who is interested in serving as our school clerk. I did speak with Jamie Sullivan, just to let him know, and he was supportive. The person is actually the one who takes minutes for our meetings, and she works in our SAU office. But he said it's not a conflict. She does live in Hampton. And I have for you her resume. If you want to take a look at it, you can see that she's got some great background and experience.
No, I didn't get it. But I would totally support that.
Okay. Are you okay?
She's done a great job on her minutes.
Yes. Yeah. So.
She has time? She has time?
Well, it would be non-very normal.
Okay.
Yeah.
If she liked to do it, I think that's great.
So then we can nominate her and.
Okay. So I think you nominate her.
Yep. So then I would like to nominate Danielle Albright for our school clerk position, effective immediately. And then it would go to the voters in March.
So I think it would be, she would have the option of putting herself forward.
Thank you.
She would not automatically be voted on. So this may be something that she only does for this particular round. She would cover us for our meetings and all that stuff. But yes, it is possible that she might not be interested, but if she is, she can sign up and add herself to the ballot.
Yeah.
And I'm grateful that she was, you know, had the interest and was willing to do it.
We are very grateful.
Yeah, I'd second that.
Okay. All right. So I think we can just take a vote on that. All in favor? Aye? Okay, so we have a school clerk. That is good news.
That's great news. Thank you very much.
I'll sign up.
Thank you.
All right. So Mrs. Curtis, I believe you are up next.
I am up next. There is, it's the beginning of the year, so there's not much on the report other than our budget and just starting to encumber funds. The grants I was working on today, we have a lot of them ending in September, this, the end of this month. So we're trying to clean them up and get them completed so that we can use every penny by the end of this month. And then you will see the list dwindle down because all the extras from COVID will be gone, and grants are slowly pulling back. So I've been working on that. Food service, we don't have any reports yet. Like it just started this week. We are still working on getting the program approved through the state. You have to upload and go through a whole bunch of reports. So we're still working on that. And then the goal is for next month to have Keith and Dr. Costa and myself sit down and work on the CIP to figure out what we're going to need now in the future and bring that to the report because they'll be looking for that soon. So we'll have to come up with costs on that. Other than that, it's just trying to still finish last year's information up and work very hard to get this information going.
Has there been any talk by the state of giving back to the schools unused COVID money?
No.
Okay.
Nope, not yet.
Okay.
Is that something we think is a possibility?
Well, they just made.
Probably not.
$5 million available in childcare centers of unused APA and the other one.
That would be great.
People can apply for it while they apply by updating their information, and the state's going to redistribute the funds that they didn't use. So it's a, you know, it's going to be.
It'll be interesting. Like I said, they all, and the majority of all the big grants ends the end of this month. So depending on what's been unused and used, like I said, we're trying to use every single penny. So.
We appreciate that.
Yep.
That is it. All right. Quick, I like that. Right? Go, go, go. All right. Okay, so we are going to do personnel next. We do have a hand carry, which is for literacy and math support specialists at Marston. And Dr. Costa will be speaking to explain that.
So as you know, we were challenged to find a case manager for Marston School. I applaud the efforts made by the principal and obviously our people service director to try to secure someone. Unfortunately, we found that although there were people that wanted to come, they couldn't get out of their contracts. There were just a number of things that we could not make it work. So we decided to, when it was, we're now here in September, we decided to hire a classroom teacher who could help us with interventionists so they could do small group support. And then what Mr. Sadler is going to do is he is going to work with his target assist teachers who have dual certification and his reading specialist to ensure that all of the students who are identified do have their service delivered by a certified case manager where they need to, and then reworking some of those other numbers. Mr. Sadler, Dr. DeSylvan Apptin, do I have that right? Okay. So with that said, we would like to bring to your nomination or consideration Joelle Kaufman. Joelle I met today. She is a former teacher in Exeter and Rye. And she had left education for a while and was working for the government. And because of her government contract, she was actually placed on leave and found herself without a job and has applied late for our position. And I met her today. She's wonderful. She brings with her some great experience and wonderful energy. I think she would be, you know, a great addition to our staff and to Marston School during this time where we would really benefit from having some more support for our students. So I would like to nominate Joelle Kaufman, who would be Step 13 Masters. She has a Masters of Education.
And it's just the one-year contract.
That's right. It'd be the rest of the year.
So I think my only, I just have a budget question. How does that compare to? How does that compare to? Without going into details of what people make.
It's comparable. I think that we definitely, this is a position we definitely need. And I think it will work. Yeah, I think it works well. And I think she's going to bring a lot. And like I said, it's just a one-year contract. So I think we can make this work.
Okay.
Thank you, Mariah. Any questions for Mr. Sadler, Dr. Sylvan Napton, or myself?
Nope. I think we all appreciate you guys being flexible and thinking out of the box to make it work. All right. So we have a, do I have a nomination for Joelle?
I would, I would second Lois's nomination.
There we go.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sign this?
Yes, please.
Let's see. We have policies next. So if you guys want to take a look in your packet, we do have a change.
We do.
To one of them, GDB. So these are all, these are all first reads. Lois and Molly and I met and went through all of these. Dr. DeSylvan Napton did have a requested change to GDB.
Yes.
So I think Lois may want to just read that really quick. It has to do with, well, I'll just let Lois read it. That'll be.
Right. What we want to do is we want to make the policy in line with their agreement. So basically, our non-certified employees working more than 20 hours a week actually get a duty-free lunch period. That mirrors the student lunch period of the school. So it's a little different. So we'd like to change the language to reflect what we do for our paraeducators. So just want to make sure that the policy aligns with our practices, if that's okay. So I can make, I'll make the change. Again, it's a first read. We'll make the change, and then we'll have it to you for next month for the second read. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
This is great. We are just barreling through. Do we want to go ahead and do minutes? Let's see. Sorry, let me. Get a right spot here. All right. We need to review the minutes of August, the school board meeting of August 13th. Does anybody have any questions or comments or corrections? There's actually none in there. It's underneath. There we go. And if not, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Molly, second? Okay. All in favor? Okay. All right. And we also have our non-public minutes of August 13th.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Okay. Non-public is approved. Let's see. Do we have, oh, sorry. We actually have more than one set of minutes. So that was for issue number one. We also have issue number two and issue number three. Those were all separate discussions.
Two and three?
All right.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Okay. So non-public minutes from August 13th, issue one, two, and three are all approved. Would like to ask if there is anyone who would like to come up and make public comment on agenda items? Seeing none. Sorry, I have to get to the number on the back. I move we enter non-public session called under RSA 91-A colon 32A. Roll call vote. Molly, please.
Oh.
That's okay. Yes, aye.
Yes, aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. All right. Move to non-public.
Make a motion to adjourn?
All in favor? And we're adjourned.